Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order the February 17th, 2016, meeting of the Frederick County Planning Commission. And to begin, would you join us, please, in a moment of silence? We have an agenda to adopt.
Madam Chairman, move for adoption.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. And we have minutes from January the 6th.
Move for adoption, January 6th, 2016 minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. For committee reports, we have none from the Planning Commission, so we're glad that Mr. David Smith is down there from the Winchester Planning Commission, and will ask for your report, please.
Good evening, Madam Chairman. I was not in attendance yesterday. I was stuck behind ice, so... But I do have an update for the Commission here. Our Commissioners voted down a request for a CUP of extended stay lodging at 574 North Loudoun Street, Zone Commercial Industrial, which had been empty for several years, and the usage on it had changed. And we sent that to City Council with a disapproval. We continue discussion on the residential density for planned unit development, and we discussed our 2015 annual report.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Secondly, Mr. Blaine Dunn from the Board of Supervisors.
Madam Chairman, at last board meeting, the Board approved an easement for the Clearbrook Volunteer Fire and Rescue Department with some provisions stating that that easement, the monies for that easement would go back to the county if the property were sold within the next 10 years, and it was unanimous.
Thank you. Thank you very much. This is the time on our agenda when anyone in the audience can address this on a subject that they'd like to discuss with us, except for what is on our agenda as a public hearing. So if anybody has anything they'd like to discuss with us, please feel free to come forward and let us know. Okay, we will close the citizen comment portion. This is a public hearing, the first item, and it's a conditional use permit 01-16 for Charlene D. Moore, which submitted for a rooming house. The property is located at 216 Talomore Drive, Stevens City, and is identified by property identification number 750-4-6-212 in the Shawnee Magisterial District. Mr. Sharon.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Members of the Planning Commission, as you pointed out, this property is located in the Shawnee Magisterial District. It's currently zoned RP, residential performance. The surrounding properties are also zoned RP, residential performance, and their uses are residential. Again, this proposed use is for a rooming house. If I could now direct your attention to the map on the left, show that the outline of the property is subject to this conditional use permit. And to show you what the aerial photograph shows, again, it's zoned RP. This is an application for a conditional use permit is in response to a zoning violation complaint of a rooming house that was received by staff. Obtaining the conditional use permit for this use is an available option to resolve this violation. The last time we looked at a rooming house was probably back in the 1980s, so I put the definition up, what we have in the zoning orders, it hasn't changed, so we have an understanding of what we're looking at here today, or tonight, excuse me. And I'm just going to read into the record real quick for everyone. It just is a boarding or rooming house is a dwelling or a part of, therefore, where for compensation, lodging, and meals are provided to boarders. So basically, that's our definition that we have written right now for a boarding or rooming house. This rooming house is permitted in the Residential Performance District with an approved conditional use permit. This proposed use will take place in a four-bedroom house with two bedrooms being rented out at any given time. There will be no employees or signs associated with this conditional use permit. The clientele of this use will be via the Internet. I'm going to let the applicant explain that a little more to you than I will. The property, however, is located in the Wakeland Manor subdivision, and the property is surrounded, as you've seen on the map, Madam Chair, by single-family dwellings. Should the Planning Commission find this use to be appropriate, staff will recommend the following conditions be assigned to this conditional use permit. Number one, all review agency comments shall be complied with at all times. Number two, no more than two rooms rented at any given time. Number three, no employees allowed with this use. Number four, no signage will be allowed with this use. And number five, any expansion into or modification of this use will require approval of a new conditional use permit. For the record, Ms. Moore is here representing this application, and I'll try to answer any questions you or any of the Planning Commissioners may have on this conditional use permit for a rooming house. Thank you.
If you don't have any questions of Mr. Sharon, any? Yes. Ms. Rose.
Mr. Sharon, can you go back to the definition? As I read that, if a family is sponsoring a foreign exchange student and they receive compensation for lodging and meals, would that be considered a boarding house?
That would be considered... As the definition is spelled out, Mr. Rose, it would be considered a boarding house.
So anybody sponsoring a foreign exchange student would need a CUP?
More or less, yeah.
Just wondering how far into somebody's privacy we're getting here.
Mr. Sharon, how did this come before us? Was they cited for a violation?
Yeah, it was actually, it was a complaint that staff had received, Mr. Kenny. The applicant was cited. The applicant came in and talked with staff, and that's how we got to this stage today.
Based on community complaint?
That is correct. We do complaint-only basis.
Mr. Sharon, one other thought, foster care. You receive compensation to put up a child. Would foster care fall under this as well?
No, no, sir. It would not.
Because you're providing room and board.
You provide room and board with foster care, depending how long that you're with that foster child, is with that family, that's how we would look at that, or that's how the county would look at it.
So you're looking at his family, not...
Yes, sir.
Does the planning staff have the personnel to monitor any conditions that might be imposed or monitor some of the concerns of the citizens who are opposed to it?
Um, we...
Or will that be on a complaint basis?
It'd be on a complaint basis, yes, sir. No, I just want to point out, Mr. Ambrosian, that's a good question, and just, as you know, all review agency comments will have to be followed. As you've seen with the building officials put in here, what needs to be done in terms of before Mrs. Moore can get her business license, that would all have to be taken care of prior to her year to operate. And that brings in another interesting question, is, you know, I'm not going to get into transient tax or anything here now because it's not our department, but that will show that, yeah, here's the rooms we're using. If there was more folks going to be there than the two rooms being rented out, that would follow, there would be a building code violation, and also a violation of the conditional use permit, and the taxation issues. Thank you.
Mark, it says two rooms, but I don't see anything in there, how many people per room?
That is... We stuck with the two rooms. That's what the applicant wanted. We could obviously amend this to add, if we wanted to add people, you know, persons staying there, if that's what this body decides to do. But again, we left it at two rooms, and that's where we left it at.
And Mark, this may be a question for the applicant. Is there going to be meals provided? Is that what the intent is for this?
I'll leave that up to the applicant.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Sharon, the current legislation up at the state, is there a possibility this could turn into a buy-right use by the summertime?
It could. There is legislation on what they call Airbnbs. That is passing through the General Assembly right now. You know, I can't today tell you that where it's at, but it is right now being looked at.
So three months from now, a CUP may not even be required?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you all. Ms. Moore, would you like to address us?
No, unless you have any questions for me.
Would you come on up? I bet there's going to be a question or two.
If you had any questions for me, that would be fine. I'm the owner of the home. It's a single home. It has four rooms in it. About a year and a half ago, I was acquainted with somebody who was a traveling nurse. We got to know each other, and I had an empty room. There was absolutely nothing in it, and I offered the services, and that's where this started. It was a great relationship, and I've forged some wonderful relationships with them. The individuals who are part of what I would call a target market, I'm part of sales and marketing, that's what I've done for my life, are very highly educated executives. I would not allow anybody else in my room, and then I have very strict rules. Airbnb is nice to use because of the security precautions that you could put forth there, as well as you could put your house rules, there's contracts, and then they handle all of the finances as far as deposits and things. I have high deposits, and I have a few other things, so I'm very selective in that process. While there's two rooms on the application, I did that for the caution's sake. Most often, it would probably only be one. If two did, it'd be a very rare overlap. My house is no different than if I had, you know, a whole family in there. I just don't. So it's a great service to be able to provide, and, like I said, I've forged some fabulous relationships.
Ms. Moore, do you plan on serving meals?
No.
Is there...
No, they can use the kitchen. They have to clean up the kitchen themselves. Again, there's very strict house rules.
What is the average, or let us stay?
The average was one month. Then there was a gentleman, who's a Vice President Macy's, by the way. He stayed with me for three or four months, only because it took him longer to find a large land development that he wanted to buy out before he moved his family out. The other gentleman who stayed with me was moving from Alabama, also an engineer. He came up here, and he stayed a month while he moved his family up. And then, of course, the traveling nurse. So in the last 18 months, it's only been about six months. Again, it's not a business that I'm in. It's just a service that if I'm connecting into my sales and marketing, and I find that we have a good connection, then I'm enjoying that I'm offering that, and the room doesn't sit empty.
Do you have on-street parking, or do you have driveway parking?
Both. I have a driveway, and then I also have on-street. And I'm on the corner lot, as you saw up there, so you've got the front and you've got the side. Two vehicles max on that. And I actually talked to the Department of Transportation for that concern, because it has been brought up before, so... But it is public parking.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
When you do rent a room out, is there usually more than one person in the room, or...
No. That's one of my house rules.
One person in a room?
One person in the room. It's not on the application, but that's one of the house rules. If you want to bring, like, they were moving their family up, so they brought their wife in once they found the homes that they wanted them to look at, and so I did allow that they'd have their wife, but it's one individual per room.
Anyone else have a question? Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Yes, Mark?
Madam Chair, I did not point this out, there is a letter at your dais that I left, that I got this morning, not in favor of this conditional use permit. I just want that for the record, yes?
This is a public hearing, and the purpose of a public hearing is for you all to provide information to us. We, if you will, use that information to make a decision on this request, along with staff, the staff comments, and the rules that we have to go by. So that's what a public hearing is for, and it becomes very effective if it is, and I may probably think that most all of you are neighbors. Is that correct? Okay. What would really help us a whole lot is if one of your neighbors has said something specific, you don't need to repeat it. We have heard it, and so to make this effective, if you've got something new to say, come on up and say it. How about that? Okay, come on up, and the other thing you need to do is give us your name and your magisterial district.
Okay. My name is Julia Duke. I'm in the same district, which I don't remember.
Shawnee.
Shawnee. So I'm just two streets over from this house, and what I'd like to point out is this house is in an HOA that we all belong to, and we've all signed covenants and agreements to live in this community. One of those agreements was that with leasing, the property, that you have your lease in writing, and it lasts for 12 months. And so what I would like to ask you, or what I'm asking of you, is to take that into consideration, because what I would like is, as a fellow member of our community, is that she is made to follow our same bylaws that she has agreed to when she purchased this house, that I did as well. And, you know, I think another main concern as a community is that this would set a precedent, because, yes, she is saying that she wants professionals staying in her home, but what is to stop another homeowner to say, "I would also like this boarding or rooming house privilege to allow people who are in rehab," or allow, you know, I mean, it just sets a dangerous precedent that we have not had in our neighborhood, and I don't think we would like to begin.
Thank you so much. Next person.
Yes.
Before you start, I'd just like to point out one thing, everybody. I know you're in an HOA, and you have covenants restricted. That's a private issue, not with the county. It's up to you to enforce that. The county does not enforce your restrictions. That's entirely up to you. So I hear what you're saying, but our decision can't be based on what your community's restrictions are.
Okay.
You have to look at what the county law is.
All right. Well, my name is Norma O'Donnell, and I am from the Shawnee District. And when I initially bought into Wakeland Manor, I was a single woman, as well as Terry is still a single woman. I bought into that area after doing great research and wanted to be somewhere where I felt that I would be safe, I would be familiar with my neighbors, I would be able to be there on the lookout for children, which our neighborhood has quite a few children. This home is adjacent to two homes that have children in both homes. One of the homes, I have a letter from the father, his children are latchkey children. I'm sure you're all familiar with that. So we're there to look out for each other. As far as the parking, it is on the corner, but that is where the school buses...
Ma'am, you need to address us.
Oh, that's where the school buses stop. So you have pickups for the children there, drop-offs there, as well as down on my corner at 104 Bancroft Lane. So the point is, we like knowing where we live, who we live by. We have a playground that is within probably 100 to 150 feet. We will not know who is boarding in her home, who is a stranger. The children will not know who is a stranger. We teach our children not to talk to strangers or to participate with them, so how can you guarantee that? So from my neighbor, "My name is Michael Payne. My family and I live at 102 Bancroft Lane, and our property sits directly behind Ms. Moore's property. I am writing to you because we oppose the approval of a conditional use permit, which will allow the property at 216 Talomore Drive to be used as a rooming house. My wife and I moved into our house in October 2014 after searching for over two years for the perfect area to raise our family. Under no circumstances would we have considered Wakeland Manor or any other neighborhood that allows what amounts to an extended stay motel. While Ms. Moore states that she has already rented rooms to vice presidents of companies as well as other professionals, I have two children, ages 10 and 8, that will not be as safe as they would be in a single-family home neighborhood. I bought a single-family home in an area of single-family homes because of the transparency it affords. I know my neighbors and can, as a matter of public record, see who I live next to. This was done by me before I moved into the house at 102 Bancroft Lane. Another concern we have is that it will also lower the value of our property. After weathering the Great Recession, home values have finally started to climb ever so slowly. The last thing we need is to have a home in our neighborhood used as a rooming house. There are many articles that talk about the starting point where neighborhoods start declining, is when single-family homes are allowed to operate as a rooming house. I have consulted with three real estate agents that all say my home value would be affected. My hope and my family's hope is that the Planning Commission will deny this request for the conditional use permit application. Thank you for your time, Michael B. Payne." So we, I have the corner lot, he's right beside of me, and then we have the property.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. The next person, come up.
My name's Terry Sittle. I live in the Shawnee District. I'm a public school educator. I think we can all speak to there's countless tax dollars that we expend in both our city schools and the schools in Frederick County to protect our students within 100-yard radius, and I'm not quite sure about your tablet, but I'll bring you back to the photo and the legend at the bottom. According to your legend, within 100 yards, one football field, we have seven elementary and preschool children who live. After the tax dollars we expend in public education to protect them all day, I don't know that we need them to have to come home in the afternoon and wonder who's walking their streets. The owners of all the properties there have served on the board in Wakeland Manor for a period, and all of the homeowners take great concern about their neighbors, their children, their property. We've already had one border, I don't know which border it was there, that has trespassed across two adjoining properties to reach another public street. I didn't purchase a property, that's a single-family property, to have someone open a hotel or a bed and breakfast next door to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address us?
My name is Brenda Seelbach, and I'm a property owner at 165 Owens Lane, which is a cul-de-sac just behind where this property is, off of Talomore and Bancroft. And I ditto everything everybody else has already said about, you know, you said you did more than I repeated, but those are definitely many of our concerns, and property values are finally starting to climb. But my question is, what would you do about, I mean, we have hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of homes in Wakeland Manor. It's an enormous neighborhood. What if we all started wanting to have a conditional use permit? I mean, it would completely devastate our neighborhood. So I'd like, you know, some concern paid to that. If you're going to allow one, could we all do it? And then, you know, I can, you know, have, she says she wants one person per room, I could say I want six person per room, and I have a whole basement that I don't use, you know? So, I mean, it kind of is going to get out of control very quickly. Those are our concerns, in addition to the concerns already stated. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Karen Malinowski Trent. I live directly beside this property at 214 Talomore Drive. I was born and raised less than a mile from this home, in the old Wakeland Manor, in a HOA. And I had a wonderful childhood. I played outside. I went away to college. I had a professional career as a marketing director in Northern Virginia. I met my husband, and he and I decided that we wanted our children to have the same kind of life that we did, and we searched in many of the subdivisions in the Frederick County area and decided that we felt that the best place for them would be the same place where I grew up, because he's not from here, he's from Southern Virginia. And we found this beautiful home, and we found this community that was in an HOA, and we felt that we could start a family here, that we would feel confident that our children could go outside and play. There was a playground across the street, which we thought would be wonderful for them. There would be tennis courts for them to play on. I played college tennis. I thought this would be a wonderful opportunity for kids to be able to play tennis together. We bought our house 10 years ago. We weathered the recession. We didn't leave when everybody else was leaving. We stayed there, and we invested money, and we made our home as beautiful as we possibly could. And now our girls are at an age where we want them to go outside and play and use their imagination and not be stuck inside watching television. And at this point, when the person staying there, and there's a Dish Network van, and I'm not sure that a Dish Network van would be driven by an executive, per se, and he was also in my yard at one point when I was outside, I don't feel that my children can be outside without me being there. That's not safe. And in this day and age, that's just not a safe thing. Airbnb has had many circumstances around it. It's in litigation for many reasons. She's renting it for $60 a night, and you don't do a background check for $75 and rent it to $60 a night. And the type of people that want to rent, and it was also on the website that it was across from a playground, the type of person that is going to go on a website and get a room for $60 a night across the street from a playground without a background check and is supposed to follow house rules, is not going to be the kind of person that I went around my two beautiful young girls that I hoped to have an innocent, wonderful childhood. So I would like for you to please consider the fact that I am a well-meaning mother who wants my children protected, who bought in an area, who is fully invested in this community and has been for, I would not like to say my age, but a number of years, and I would like for my children to feel like when they grow up, that they would get married and come back and want to live in the same community, because they felt safe, and they felt loved, and they felt like it was a great place to raise children. And I hope that this is what you will understand, and this is what you will take into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person, come up. Person?
Bear with me just a little bit, as I'm going to filter out everything that you've heard already or tried to. But I did want to reiterate just a little bit, that I feel that if a poll was taken to the neighbors and citizens in the surrounding single-family communities, not just Wakeland Manor, that it would show that the sentiment that I'm describing, which is that many of us came to Frederick County, and I grew up in Frederick County, I lived in Winchester, I went to Quarles, I went to Handley. My husband and I lived in Loudoun County for 35 years and came back here in retirement, as did many of our community members in Wakeland Manor. And we're co-living with young families, and we couldn't be more pleased with the neighborhood. I wanted to just mention that when we lived in Loudoun County for 35 years, we did live in one community. And during that period of time, much to our dismay, we came to realize that our community was being dragged down by overcrowding and lack of controls on occupancy. And we're not talking exactly about that here, I understand. But in Wakeland Manor, we had expectations, a protection of our properties based on the master plan that it was built under in agreement with the county and the design approved by the county. The single-family homes were intended to be as such and not enterprises to make money. So in the end, those communities that I previously lived in were damaged and suffered because of property values being depleted and just not a good situation, and we left there. So I think that's probably the primary thing that essentially hasn't been covered. I just would say that allowing a flow of residents into the neighborhood on short-term stays creates a heightened sense of uncertainty and as to the character and the intentions of those renters, which will be impossible to assess. Thank you very much.
Ma'am, excuse me. Tell us your name.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Sherri Long, and I'm in the Shawnee District. I live on Collington Court.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Is there anyone else who would like to address us? Anyone else? Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing, and this is when we get to do our work. Thoughts?
Madam Chairman, you know...
Is it too late? Okay. My name's Ali O'Leary, and I live at 103 Bancroft. I'm diagonal to Ms. Moore, and I don't know that I'm going to offer much more than a ditto to everything that was said. I have two young children, and as Karen stated before, all the reasons that we chose to live there, I'm sorry, I cry when I get nervous, so just ignore that. But, and I know that somebody said that the HOA doesn't matter, but I think it goes to show the mindset of everybody here, when we bought our house, what we were expecting and what we were thinking we were getting into, and having a boarding house is not that. I don't want strange people across the street from me. I have a five-year-old boy and a two-year-old daughter, and I think it's absolutely ludicrous that somebody can just open their home to anybody, and we have no say. And there's... that somebody can just open their home to anybody, and we have no say in what kind of background checks are being done, if any, and house rules can change, whatever those are. It's...and I don't...and again, like Karen said, I don't know what executives she's talking about, but there's been a Dish Network van across the street from us for three months that I can remember, and it could have been there longer. So, I'm sorry. Some of the things that she has stated are just not true. They're not true, and I don't have anything else to state.
Thank you.
Except that this is ridiculous.
Thank you. No, no, I'm sorry. We understand. We understand your concern and your emotions about this, but we would appreciate it if applause was not repeated. Thank you so much. Thank you. I will say one thing, and I will speak, is that I hope you didn't think that we said that the HOA does not matter. The HOA does matter. It's different from us, but it does matter. So, I hope, I hope you get that from us. So, Mr. Kennedy, you were about...
I did have one question, probably from Mark, and refresh my memory on a conditional use permit. It's to the piece, it's to the property, not the actual owner. That is what sale it conveys.
That is correct.
Yeah, just reiterate what you said on HOA. We're not here to enforce your restrictions. That's a private issue. That's amongst you all to file suit, stopper, whatever. That's not our area. We can't make that determination. So, it's not that your HOA...HOA doesn't matter. It matters to you, but it doesn't matter in our decision-making because it's...we have to look at the county law, not yours, own restrictive covenants.
Excuse me. Excuse me.
For me, I have a big problem with the county even stepping into this. I don't think it should be a CUP. The state's looking to make it a buy right. However, we're here tonight to look at that. And since we have to look at it based on what the criteria and its own ignorance is, personally, I don't have a problem with it. However, you bought your house in the wrong spot to try and do this, in my opinion. If you're out in the RA or you had a two- or five-acre lot, that's one thing, but you moved into an area with no neighbors and restrictive covenants that you brought onto yourself, and personally, I don't feel it's a good fit. But at the end of the day, it's up to the Board of Supervisors. We make a recommendation. If you don't like it, it's up to you to go to court, not us.
So, give you a trail. Anyway, any other comments? Excuse me, we had Greg down there.
I guess just one. I was expecting to hear a lot of complaints because the lady's been doing it for a while about traffic, people parking out in the streets, being rude, playing loud music or something, not keeping the yard mode, and I didn't hear any of that. So, I don't know. And as far as saying something about DirecTV van, I don't know that that's fair to discriminate somebody like that. That's just what they do, and it's...I can't see anything wrong with that if they're not causing a problem.
I was just going to say that you may have some recourse civilly as the Homeowners' Association, but we don't have any control over that.
Madam Chairman, I, you know, listen to the...I come here with mixed debate even in my own home. I've had something of this nature, and I understand what all these people are coming from on that. I don't do agree with Commissioner Oates that I think it's the wrong neighborhood. Whether it becomes buy right three to four months from now, that's...we're dealing with it tonight. I don't think it's a good fit in this neighborhood. I really don't. I just don't think it's...we don't have the staff to regulate this in the county. In a conditional use permit, it goes with the property. This property owner that's currently there, she could sell this, and the next group that comes in, it becomes more of a hotel or, you know, extended stay, which I was at a City Planning Commission yesterday grappling with that situation. I just have a hard time going along with this in this neighborhood and this condition where this is at this time.
I also second those thoughts. When I came in tonight, I thought that it was all right, maybe be good. But after hearing these people, I'm on their side. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Well, I, you know, I've lived in five or six rooming houses going through college in my young days, and I don't think I was any kind of a risk. It's one of America's oldest customs and traditions to be able to rent a room, particularly elderly people, and I'm going to have to support it. I'm going to have to move to approve CUP 0116.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve conditional use permit 01-16. Any other comments? Mr. Dunlap?
Dunlap, no.
Triplet, no.
Kenny, no.
Bowden, no.
Oates, no.
Manuel, yes.
Ambrogi, yes.
Marston, no.
Unger, yes.
And the chair votes no. This will...this is a recommendation to not approve a conditional use permit to the Board of Supervisors, and that will occur on March the 19th.
Excuse me, Madam Chairman.
So, our work is done? Yes. What?
Just a little point of order if we may. The motion that was made failed, so we would need an alternative motion in the affirmative.
I can't hear what you're saying for reasons I don't understand.
The motion to approve failed, and therefore, we would need an alternative motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Madam.
I got it. So, we need a different motion?
Madam Chairman, move for denial of CUP 0126.
Second.
01-16.
And it has been seconded. Let's go ahead and start. How about Mr. Unger down there?
Unger, no.
Marston, yes.
Ambrogi, no.
Manuel, yes.
Oates, yes.
Bowden, yes.
Kenny, yes.
Triplet, yes.
Dunlap, yes.
And the chair votes yes. So, that recommendation to deny is the one that we'll pass on to the Board of Supervisors. Okay. Our second agenda item is the Department of Planning and Development 2015 Annual Report.
Madam Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. We thought we would bring this here, excuse me, in front of the Planning Commission this evening. Obviously, we normally have a Planning Commission retreat that is about this time every year. Obviously, we have not scheduled that at this point, but look to do so in April. And so, we're currently looking at April the 20th, which is a Wednesday evening that's a regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting, to do something a little bit different for the Planning Commission. And so, with that in mind, I know the anticipation is going to be building from you Planning Commissioners. We thought we should come in front of you and bring the annual report, present it to you for your information, and just so it can be used however feel appropriate in the meantime. I apologize here with this.
Mike, now everybody sees your passport.
22601, Winchester.
Same as yours, Gary.
She has iPads, right? Well, I'm not going to go into too much detail, but obviously, the annual report looks at 2015 and all of the planning activity that occurred. A variety of different information is contained, some background information, some of which we went through previously with the background work for the comprehensive plan, but it tries to capture that. In addition, it looks at all of the various applications that we've received, the rezonings, master plans, subdivisions, site plans. Then, it also describes the committee work, Comprehensive Plans and Programs Committee, Development Review Committee, Historic Resources, to name but a few. So, all of that information, much like it has been in the years past, is contained with that in that annual report, a copy of which is in...been placed in front of you. We'll be able to distribute that digitally here following the meeting this evening. Just a point on a couple of highlights, quick facts, if you will. The population figures were recently released by the Walden Cooper Center for Public Service, and the 2015 population for the county is 82,623. We anticipate, and it's projected, again, by the Walden Cooper folks, that that's going to continue to increase, 2020 being about 97, 2030, 120. And I know from previous work, when we get to 2040, we're looking at a significantly higher number than that, about 140,000. So, the population has continued to anticipate to grow, and with this annual update that's provided by the Walden Cooper, we know where we are today, and again, 82,623. When we look at what's actually been occurring here in the county in recent years, of course, one way to track the activity is with residential new construction building permits, and it's something that was very significant in years past, and within the last decade, that had slowed down considerably, but we've noticed clearly within the past several years that that is continuing to increase again. The total number of building permits that were issued this past year was 707, again, mixed between single-family, townhouses, mobile homes, and some additional multifamily this year, Village Orchard Ridge being the example where many of those came from. And so, I want to point kind of to the trends, if you will, and that gets us from 2006, and of course, 2005, we were up at 1,200, but you could see how the number of building permits issued during that time dropped, steadied out, and in recent years, continues to increase. So, I felt that that is an important thing to track and include within the annual report as we always do. Those building permits are generally divided, of course, amongst the magisterial districts, but are generally higher within the Apeken Magisterial District and the Stonewall Magisterial District. Gainesboro has a good number of permits, too, but where we see most of the activity, again, is in the Lake Frederick, Shenandoah area, and Snowden Bridge, two big projects that have highlighted a lot of the residential building permit activity. Point very quickly to zoning violations, and of course, under the guidance of the zoning administrator, we respond to most of the different complaints that are out there. They're spread pretty evenly throughout the county and by district, and generally, they deal with tall grass, inoperable vehicles, junky properties, with occasionally other violations popping in there. Again, the distribution's pretty even. There are a total of 77 violations this past year. Point out that that's less than in previous years, and the department's made quite an effort, I think, to try and resolve as many of them as possible with the property owner before actually having to pursue the zoning violation. I won't go into the different planning applications, but to recognize, the rezonings were significantly higher this past year than they have been in recent years. We had a total of 12, including a couple of very significant ones, the Heritage Commons and Crosspoint, which of course, the Planning Commission had a fair amount of involvement in. Master plans, subdivisions, site plans, again, were high. So, those zoning applicants, excuse me, those planning applications are highlighted, and each one is individually listed within the report that you have in front of you. Won't go into the different committee reports, because of course, you all participate in those committees, but any members of the general public who may be interested, again, this rezoning, excuse me, this annual report will be placed online and available for anybody to review, and hopefully, it would give them whatever information they may be looking for. So, with that, that's a brief overview of the annual report for 2015. Again, we felt it appropriate to get it to the Planning Commission, anticipate as getting back together and looking at not only this type of information, but perhaps more directly related to the comprehensive plan update that is in the...we're in the middle of, and when we get to the Planning Commission retreat, April 20th. I know it's already on your calendar because it's a Planning Commission meeting, so we'll be talking more with you about that in the next couple of Planning Commission meetings about what we will be discussing and what you would like to see discussed at that meeting. With that, Madam Chairman, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the commission may have.
Any questions for Mr. Ruddy?
So, Mike, we're just going to have it here that night?
We may have it somewhere else, but we do have you for that night, so we'll see what we can put together. Ideally, yes.
Well, unless...
Madam Chairman?
I would suggest that you kind of leave it open.
Yes.
Sorry, Mike. Did we need one of our liaisons here for that, or no, from Winchester?
No, we don't actually need anybody there, but you're more than welcome to participate if you would like.
Yes, you are. Yes, you are. Give us some pointers.
Okay.
Or maybe food.
That's the other part. That's the important point. Okay. Well, I think we are coming to the end of our agenda, and I'm quickly looking. We do have the first meeting in March, and that is March the 2nd, so if you'll keep that on your calendar, we will see you in two weeks or so. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, move for German.
Second.
Second. Hold in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you all very much.